All right. We see another year on that particular subject. Thank y'all.
Thank you all. Anything?
Y'all have a good rest of the day.
Good luck, sir.
You see Martin play with Aiden. All right, this time we'll come back to order. We move to item number nine. Item number nine involves resolution implementing changes to the Personal Property Tax Relief Act in Scott County. Ms. Darnish.
We have a resolution that we need to approve, and this is for personal use vehicles valued at $1,000 or less will be eligible for 100% tax relief. Personal use vehicles valued at $1,001 to $20,000 will be eligible for 45% tax relief. And personal use vehicles valued at $20,001 or more shall receive 45% tax relief on the first $20,000 of value. And all other vehicles which do not meet the definition of qualifying, which would be business use vehicles, farm use vehicles, motorhomes, et cetera, will not be eligible for any form of tax relief under this program.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
When it says personal use vehicles valued at $1,000 or less will be eligible for 100% tax relief, how do we make that determination? Who makes that determination? Commissioner?
That's where I got these relief amendments from. Because that would be the value of the vehicle that they have.
The only thing about that, when you value a vehicle, you have to know the miles and condition and everything. Right?
Yes, you do it yourself. I don't know what she goes by. It's whatever she, whatever her guidelines are.
Well, all I'm saying is, I've never seen it. And I've got a G-O tracker, an I-7 model, that's got 240,000 miles on it. And the only place I drive that thing's to is to the farm in the back. I mean, I don't care.
And you're still paying taxes on it?
Sure I am.
Well, I'm saying what they do, don't they use an ADA to look at the value?
But what I'm saying is, I have no idea. Because you got to put in the, to get those values, you have to put in the miles and condition and all that stuff.
You could probably talk to her. But somebody could.
Yeah, I got you.
We have a really old vehicle, and all it shows is the $23 tax amount.
Got you.
It's all that's on there.
Wheel tax, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk to her too, about, she, a cattle trailer is also been tagged. Yeah. I get the $23 tax ticket, and it's a cattle trailer. And because I have it tagged as a permanent, permanent tag on it, you know, they give me the $23. But I don't think it's actually supposed to be taxed. Not for a farm, or a cattle trailer, or a flatbed, as far as that, a flatbed trailer, where does that go? But they all have items to enter, register in Scott County.
Well, all those issues could be taken up individually if people wish with Commissioner Reedy. But I agree, I'm like Mr. Hood, I'm sure she don't come around and look at each one of them individually. She probably has some sort of guidelines, and uses average value for that model or something, but...
And I can get more details and send it out to everybody on how that's determined.
All right. Are there changes? Are these changes, or this is...
That's the, I didn't reinvent the wheel. I just put in the new tax rate.
All right. All right, any other questions about this particular resolution? All right, entertain a motion to approve as written.
I'd like your motion.
Mr. Compton makes a motion, we approve this resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Herron seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, we move to item number 10. Chief Local Elected Official Consortium Agreement. Ms. Darnish.
We need to update our CLEO agreement. It's got some new legislation in it from the General Assembly that's been passed down. And also, we need to have Jack, if so desired, as an alternate for dating man to serve on the CLEO board. And Jack attended a meeting, but I don't think was able to vote because that wasn't formal action. Showing that he was an alternate. So for Jack to attend future meetings of the CLEO board in Danny's place when he can attend, we'll need to put that in place where Jack will have voting rights. If that's who you choose to be your alternate.
There was a, the signature that we had to have for, that's when I noticed that I actually couldn't sign for the board as part of that CLEO board because I wasn't formally made an alternate for Danny.
All right. Let's, let's deal with those separately. And let's begin with the agreement. You've had a chance to look over that. Been supplied. Any questions about the agreement in itself? And if not, we need a motion to approve it as written.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Compton makes a motion, we approve the agreement as provided. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Mann seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we deal with the, is anybody here who wishes to campaign against Mr. Compton for this alternate?
I'm campaigning for him. What happened? Those meetings are always from middle to that. I try to get them have evening meetings because I could, I take vacation when I'm here. It's hard to take vacation every time you have a meeting. I tried to give them a chance, they would not. So that's why I was never able to go to a single meeting because I could not make their schedule. I know a lot of those people working, that's during their workday, well, it's during my workday too. And I can't just take off vacations or come to meetings. So anyway, that's why it's Jack to go to my place. And Jack, thanks for doing that. But we do, and I nominate Jack to be an alternate to me. Really, I'd just like to be removed from it, put him on there as being the primary person for it because I'm not going to be able to attend those meetings till I retire.
Well, let's start out, I tell you what, let's do, since we don't know for sure, let's go ahead and start out as an alternate, let him just fill in. And then if we can, put him on as a permanent, we will.
I'll make a nomination to Jack to serve as an alternate. That's out.
All right. Mr. Mann nominates Mr. Compton as an alternate for the CLEO board, for Scott, to represent Scott County. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Herron seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would stand.
Mr. Compton, I'm standing. All right? So we'll take care of that. And then we can see when, when that comes up for reappointment, or if it's possible to do it midterm. If it is, we can put him on permanent. Thank you. Who would that be? Tina, would you handle that, I guess? Does she do, can you look at those appointments and see, or contact CLEO and see if we can put somebody on permanently? Or just should we leave him on as an alternate until the term is out? Thank you. All right, thank you. We move to item 11. Approval of Audit Services for the county. Ms. Darnish.
We have been talking with Ron Bostick about adding a year to, would be year four of the audit services. And his price for, that Scott County would pay would be $34,500. The other agency totals would be $16,250, for a total amount of $50,750. And the amount of those increases were $2,400 for the county, $250 for EDA, and $1,600 for PSA. And I would just need authorization to sign the contract with Mr. Bostick, who represents Bostick Tucker and county PCs.
All right. Any questions?
How much do we budget for that?
Thirty-four, five.
This is all beyond, are we budgeting? Okay, about the total, $50,750, was that?
The other agencies pay $16,250.
I make a motion to go with Bostick, Ron Bostick.
All right, Mr. Mann makes a motion, we enter into an agreement with Ron Bostick for audit services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hood seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We move to item 12, which is Accounting Services for the county.
Okay, this was a new contract because our five years was up with Hickok Firm. And we interviewed the three applicants on May 30. The interview committee consisted of Sally, Bill, Bart, Amy, and myself. It was a unanimous decision to negotiate with Hickok Firm again for those services. And his estimate was an increase of 10%, which would be good for the next five years, the 10% increase. So that would make the county's portion $20,900, other agencies $13,200, for a total of $34,100. And in our budget, I believe we had the county's portion at $24,000 for fiscal year '18. So that was a little bit below what we had in there. So I would also just need authorization to sign the contract. I have talked to Mr. Firm, and he, Sally, and myself have looked over the contract, and him as well. So it's just, if the board chooses to continue with Hickok Firm for the next five years for accounting services, then I just need authorization to sign that contract.
Is it appropriate to talk about the people that's contesting that? Because I got a letter on, a lot of the others did too, I think, about that award.
We can have discussion. We can have discussion.
Sure. Well, the letter I got said they did, they felt like if they weren't treated fairly, and that the references they gave hadn't been contacted. So I don't know. I mean, this, this firm we've used has done a good job. And I don't know about the experience of the other firm that's contesting it. I don't think it's a formal contest on it, but their concern was that they weren't selected or within the county. I believe Hickok is the right way to go.
I'd also need some more information. I don't know about the whole committee, but my second choice was not the firm that's contesting. We had another firm, that's a large firm in Tennessee, that does a lot of audits for government agencies. They only have one in Virginia. So that was a deciding factor for my selection for Hickok Firm. And they've worked for the county for five years in this capacity and have done a good job. That's why other references weren't called. Because of our procurement policy, we are to choose our top selection and negotiate price with them. So that's why...
I agree with you all on this because I looked at that email about their experience and stuff, and that did not fit. I didn't think with their past experience as far as doing this kind of service. And I think y'all made the right choice, but being we got that letter, I don't know. If they're going to formally contest, it was just a letter of concern. I'm not sure how to read that letter I gave to Sally. Did y'all get a copy, get a letter too on it?
I got an email and a letter.
Okay. But y'all's take on this, I mean, I think you all will back the staff here. I am. I think Dr. Redmond said he would, that he's going to back the staff on their decision. But, and like I say, I don't know if it's a formal objection or if it's just a concern. Maybe for the next go around, they'd be, would be more, more able to be considered. But like you said, Ms. Darnish, that they weren't even their second choice. So their past experience, I think, of doing that service was not, you know, was not something they'd done recently or had done in several years. But then I think I made the right decision. But Sally, do we need to do anything as far as, is that, do you see that as a contested thing? Or we just go on with it?
There's nothing to contest yet, at Gerald's decision today. And after that, you know, but he's, he'd like to be chosen, so that's what he's...
How was the price, was it really?
I don't know. And when he emailed me his price after the interviews, it was just one lump amount. I don't know if that's for everything, or if that was for, you know, I don't under, I don't know how his price was come about. One of the interview questions was a price. Him and the other firm did not have a price. And according to our procurement procedures, we negotiate price with our first choice. And that's what we did. In the end, if something happens, the first choice doesn't work out, we move to the second choice and so forth.
So what we need to do here, we just need to give you a authorization to sign the services for the county firm? That what we need to do?
To sign the contract.
I make a motion we do that. Mr. Mann makes a motion that we approve the selection of the committee and authorize county administrator to sign the contract with Hickok Firm. And Mr. Compton seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We move to item 13. Approval of State Homeland Security Grant to support the CERT program. You might want to discuss that.
Everybody should have a copy of the letter. I emailed that out previously. Because of the timeline to get this to Russell County to apply for the grant, that's why I sent out by email to see if I could get approval to go ahead and submit the letter. And I did hear back from four of the board members with yes responses. So I went ahead and did the letter, and you've got a copy on your tablet as well as in the email. I just need formal approval that that was okay.
All right. Any questions? We need a motion to approve this grant, support to, for the CERT program for homeland security. Mr. Jeter makes that motion?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item 14. The Slant Swinging Bridge Project.
I guess we need to have some discussion about what we're going to do about that project. Either send a letter to VDOT letting them know that we're not going to use that revenue sharing. I think that would be the thing to do. If we're not going to do the $62,500 matching where they would know ahead of time of July 1st instead of just waiting for the deadline and not doing it.
I'm sure that VDOT told us that if we didn't take those funds this time, it would affect our future ability to apply for those funds.
That's what I had heard too, so it's a problem.
But that didn't seem to be the case today when y'all asked, were free to ask that question.
Well, this is the second time it's happened, and I know it happened out here on other projects. So they're, they don't take kindly to that. It's a big deal for them to do this, and so, but anyway, there's no one here to speak about the swing bridge. It's supposed to have been doing some fundraising and stuff, but I don't see them coming up with that much money.
And I can see it being portrayed as negative toward the county because you basically knock somebody else out of having those funds earmarked for their project. Because we...
Those funds aren't competitive, are they?
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
All right.
So what would the action?
So you could either vote to do the $62,500 matching or not do the project.
That's not going to happen unless they come up with the magic funds too.
Yeah, they only have a couple thousand dollars.
It's just not going to happen, period. You know, I'm like, I'm like you all. I want everybody in the county to get everything that they can. But this project's been going on long enough. And the lady has a great mission, and she has, you know, it's a, it's a good idea, but I mean, it's just not going to happen. Fund-wise. No, let's just, another donor steps up and goes in there.
He would have to July, what did, what did he say, July 1st?
They'd need the money by July 1st.
Yeah. So that donor could come forward by July 1st, and it could still happen.
Yeah, it could happen, I'm sure.
So if you wanted to give it until, you know, if you wanted to maybe, we have another meeting July 21st for the budget?
I don't think this takes us to the end.
Okay.
June 21st.
Yeah, that's two weeks.
But what you probably need to do is get in contact with Ms. Millen and just say, we're down to the wire, you know, so we need to know something. Yeah, we need some finality to this thing, and that's fine if you want. Table is till June 21st, we can get a little information. We can have action on it to close it out. Anything else on that topic? All right, we move to item 15. Solid Waste Center Discussion. I think I ask that this be added to the agenda because of the discussion we had the other time about all the various issues with solid waste centers. And so there's no particular items in general, that, no particular items that we have to discuss. But I guess this is the time to open the floor for discussion with anything that relates to the solid waste centers at this time.
I went down to the one at Dunkin' and Sunday morning, and somebody had hauled and filled three dumpsters up with brush. And the big box was full too. But that is for household waste and not for that. Whoever done that, shame on them. I couldn't believe, I mean, to have three of them filled with brush and a big box full too. That's not the intent, and hopefully, some way, somehow, we can alleviate this by whatever it takes to get people not to do that. And I saw the tenant there on our Monday morning, and he was, he was talking about it too. He couldn't believe when he came in, seeing all that in those dumpsters. But what the people need to realize, if you bring something like that down, it's $27 a ton. Is that not correct, Bill? $27 a ton to get that stuff, to deal with it. And if it gets sent to the, to the places it goes to, but to do that, it's just, and the dumpsters were full. There was no place to put any trash Monday morning. Found a couple places, I put my little few bags in there, but it was full of brush. And that's not the intent of these dumpsters, I don't know. It's just, if you deal with this, deal with it, and you sound like that goes on, you think, you know, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot every time we turn around trying to take care of everybody once run.
I know it's the same thing at him, if somebody filled it up, and threw a couple of it with brush this week.
We are, compared to May of last year, we had 100 to 92 tons more this year of trash to haul out.
Well, I got a flag down again yesterday on another project. And he says there's truckloads of trash coming by late in the evenings by his house. He lives on Yuma Road. And it's Tennessee trash. He says whole truckloads come through, and I'm sure they're going to the dump. And I know there's a lot of truckloads come by my house, full of those. And they're full of trash, but I don't know what the tag numbers of those are. I'm just sitting on a porch and can see it. But I think we're getting a lot, in Yuma especially, I think we're getting a lot of Tennessee trash there. Because the dumpsters seem like they're staying full. I can see why we're getting a lot of extra trash from somewhere.
Be it open on Sunday where our trucks don't run. And our trucks don't run, just to remind everybody, because the landfill that we haul to isn't open on Sundays. And we've never worked on Sundays. But even if we ran trucks on Sunday, we would still have a bottleneck at the transfer station with no way to empty. We would still hit that capacity. And so that's why you have people, Ms. Owens said that she's been there the last three Mondays, and it's been closed on Mondays. Well, that's why, because it's filling up on Sundays. And I don't know why people, if I go three times on a Monday, then it's closed every Monday. I might take my trash off on Tuesday. I don't know why people do that. You know, they're empty on Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, Friday morning, Saturday morning. But Monday seems to be that big day. And it's because of it being open on Sunday. I can go to Nicholsville, I've looked at it for the last two, three months, or longer than that. And I'll notice Nicholsville Saturday night or Sunday morning clear. I mean, no dumpster showing. Looks like there's no way it's going to fill up that day. And I'll come by there Monday morning, just go to work, and it'll be peeped over. So Sunday is a, is a problem. All of them would fill up, maybe every day. But we have trucks running every day, except for Sunday. We've had a particular problem this last week. We have two of our trucks are having mechanical issues, and we've been down to one packer truck. So that just compounds the problem.
If you get down to one packer truck, is it feasible to maybe let part of the men work days and let them work a late evening or shift or something? To where you can keep the truck running a double shift when that trucks are down?
Yeah, if we felt like that, we got there, we had to do that, that we could. Think about it, you, it wouldn't be just the truck driver, it'd be the transfer station. And then we still have that capacity of the trucks, the trailers that we push the trash into. See, during the day, we're pushing trash into those trucks. They pull one out and get the yard dog and put another one in. Well, while that one's filling up, the hauler from the landfill that we haul to is coming to get in that trailer and bringing a empty trailer. So that wouldn't happen during the night. You would still get into that bottleneck situation if all those cogs aren't turning. It ends up at the transfer station, and it's against the law for us to leave trash on the transfer floor. We have to push it into the truck by overnight. That's just an environmental issue with BEQ that we have to do.
Well, I know we've done a lot of different things with waste stations and things. One suggestion, I mean, I know a lot of people like to do it on Sundays. If we want to leave them open on Sundays, I'm not opposed to that. But why don't, one suggestion is, why don't we just start closing them every evening? So they're not, there's not nighttime trash when nobody's there. And it'd still have the convenience of going down there on Sundays to their waste station. That way, they can be open from 7:00 till 7:06, 7:07, whatever. And just have somebody to open and then close them every day. That way, you wouldn't be getting any late overnight trash. Especially, and that's probably when a lot of this is going on, is probably late evening, I would think. Because I know no one's there as far as out of county or out of state trash. I mean, that's just, I don't know. I mean, that's...
There's been some discussion about whether or not we, our vehicle in Scott County's being recognized at these sites. I notice in Tennessee, I don't know where it would have to come from, but if Tennessee has all their tags and their vehicle designated what county they're from, Virginia doesn't do that. And I guess it may be a DMV thing, that whether or not Scott County, Wise County, or whoever it was have their vehicle designated on the state tag, instead of us putting a sticker on windshield and trying to designate our vehicle as a Scott County vehicle, you know? I don't know, like I say, I don't know where it'd have to come through the DMV or the Virginia General Assembly or wherever it'd have to come from. But that would be one way that we might get out of designating our vehicle to make it come through the state. And that might eliminate some of the issues about out of state trash and out of county trash. And I, way, they're all talking over on Yuma, that maybe that's a, a lot of our problem is out of state stuff coming over into Scott County and us having to dispose of it. And like Bill said, it's a tipping fee that we have to pay, what is it, 20-some, 80? eight, twenty-eight dollars?
Twenty-seven dollars.
Twenty-seven dollars tipping fee for each ton of trash that we take down there and dump at these things, and depending on how much trash we get out of state, we're paying for somebody's Washington County, Russell County, Sullivan County, or whoever it is, we're paying for. A lot of money.
Bill, when they get, like in tree trimmings, it is actually tree stumps over Dungannon, do they sort that out or are they going to send it on to, to the landfill, or do they go ahead and send it?
If it's put in the brush box or the junk box, and it's pretty, that's all it is, we can put it, we have a burn pile at the landfill that, anybody that's doing tree trimming or land clearing like that can bring it up to the transfer station and put it in that pile, and when the, the conditions are suitable, we, we burn that pile to keep them happy to pay that tipping fee. But when it's mixed in dumpsters with the trash, that becomes a problem. Our ordinance does allow that, but it's supposed to be three feet and, no more than three feet in length, and no bigger than, forget, it's like two or three inches in diameter. And it's, you know, it's meant to be incidental, you know, you're clearing your shrubbery around your house or something that you can throw in the trash. It shouldn't be companies that's doing tree trimming, or farmers doing tree trimming and bringing it to those sites. That's not the intent, like you said earlier.
Dave, what's your suggestion? That you want to get it on the list? Apparently it's on your brain.
Well. I asked for it to be on the list because we discussed the stickers and all that stuff, you know, at that time. You know, I've got some personal opinions, and they're probably not majority opinions, and that's fine, but, I mean, I don't have a lot of solutions either. One of my opinions with regards to the stickers and Mr. Compton's comments about, you know, the tags and trying to figure out a way to identify county people, is that doesn't matter if you don't have someone there to look at it. It doesn't matter what your car says or who, where you're from, if you pull in to the dumpster site and there's nobody there to look at it. And I think this all kind of began when we had periods of time with nobody manning the stations. And people are smart, and they figure out the schedules, and they figure out roughly when somebody's going to be there, when they're not, and they work around that schedule. And if they've got regular household trash, they probably go at twelve o'clock in the day, and, and they don't mind, but if they've got something that's going to go in there, whether it's a propane tank, or a tire, or a load of brush, they're going to go at midnight.
That's what I'm saying. I think a lot of it would be eliminated if you just close them in the evening and open them back up in the morning, and still leave it, Sunday option available. Because who in their right mind is going to be hauling off trash at twelve or two o'clock in the morning?
I agree. I mean, I agree, unless they're trying to intentionally get it done without being seen. You know, my personal opinion is, on the Sunday thing, I would hate to see that go away. I realize it's a problem, that's just personal, because, you know, I work five days a week, and Saturdays, a lot of times I'm gone, or we're, I'm doing something else, and then Sunday afternoons, it's a common time at, at the dumpster site we go to, and you go, and it's just one car right after another, or there's five or six there. I mean, it seems to be a popular time for everybody, and I know that's why some of that comes up. And the Antioch site was like that this Monday morning, probably some others. Now, the, the Mox and Gap site is closed, and, and I've argued that, that's another one of my opinions, and it's just an opinion, but the Antioch site probably has, looks worse on Monday morning because Mox and Gap's closed from Saturday evening to Monday. So you're also, not only you're getting Nicholsville or Snowflake and Antioch area, but you're getting at least half of Gate City who knows Mox and Gap is closed, so they go up there. And it's just not big enough and built for that kind of volume. So those are just some observations, but I don't have, you know, if I could wave a wand.
You don't have one?
I don't have one, but if I could wave a wand and the budget would stand it, I'd make a motion today to man these sites full-time, like they were done at the beginning, and close them in the evenings, and, but they wouldn't be open at all unless there was somebody there to determine who puts stuff in and who doesn't, and where they put it.
Somebody brought something up to me, and this is something that somebody brought up, but some adjoining counties are collecting trash, they go around and collect the trash. You don't have dump sites. You go and, it's like Kingsport, you put your trash out on Monday or Tuesday, or whatever day you're supposed to have it picked up. And they say, that's working. I don't know where it is or not. Somebody brought that up to me Monday, and if you went that route, you'd get rid of all these dump sites, you'd get rid of having to buy all those green boxes, you'd get rid of the people throwing everything in the county, and if they put something out there that wasn't supposed to, you leave it laying in their driveway. But that's just a thought. Somebody brought this up to me Monday night.
Well, it's like Kingsport though, they provide you with at-home dumpsters. If you're in the city limits, you're paying city taxes, that's what they provide you with. So that would be.
Trash cans.
Yeah, and that's what the cost.
And car.
Because, I mean, that'd be, that'd be a big expense.
It's a big expense when you're paying thirty or forty people to set a site, you're paying the portalets, you're buying them big green boxes, you're paying electric bill, paying for the portalets. It's a big expense there when you figure it. And it'd cut down on a lot of trash, what I'm saying. I'm just, somebody brought this up to me and wanted me to bring it up.
Well, Ben, and I'm not, I'm not, I do understand the value to that, but here's my question to that. If we can't get the trash emptied from sixteen sites, what kind of manpower and truck power would it take when we've got three hundred miles of just unpaved roads? I mean, how many, what kind of labor and?
I think the only county that does that around is Dixon County.
I was thinking, he said Lee County, and is it?
Lee County has waste sites.
Yeah, Lee County has waste sites.
I know Dixon County does. I work there all the time, and they go, you sit out for the road, Dixon County does.
The thing about Dixon County, we've all been there, it's, you're either on a hill or a valley, and the roads, you know, you're, the roads are wearing the valley. Here, to get to every household outside their driveway would take some manpower and some trucks. The trucks that we'd have to have would not be packer trucks, or the front-loading packer trucks, be rear-loading trucks, it'd be a cheaper truck. And they may last longer, than ten years, because you wouldn't be taking that trash and leachy across the top of the truck every day. But it would, it'd be a significant undertaking to do it. It would do away with Tennessee and out of county trash. But you would have trash cans lining our roads at every residence too, so.
Well, Dixon County, I know they have probably steeper capigraphy than we do overall, but at the same time, ninety-nine percent of their road's repaid, and they're about half the size of us geographically, the Scott County.
Fifty thousand residents.
Population's less, all the landmass is less, so they're, they're in a little bit different situation than we are.
What about making it a private enterprise, if somebody wanted to pay, somebody, if they wanted to come around and collect trash, and then pay the service?
So you're saying give them an option?
Giving them an option to be a, I mean, let something up, let a private enterprise go around and pick up people's trash if they so desired, and be up to them where they drove to.
Sure, and that'd be something that whoever we did decide to do that with, I mean, contractually, they would have to have a lot of, of what we would want as a county, because we just wouldn't want to do anything with personal trash.
That's what I live in Raleigh County, West Virginia, is what they did. You paid the, it was their contract, like they came, and you had to pay a monthly fee.
You paid like, whatever, I don't know what the monthly fee would be, but I mean, I'm sure it'd be worth it to a lot of people if they didn't. They just wanted to take the trash down to the edge of the road and have somebody come pick it up on a certain day. I mean, it'd be up to them whether or not they took the service or not.
We've had a few individuals start a service like that, and, and I think one started in Nicholsville, and he got a few clients that he'd go by and pick up the trash. We have standards that if someone were to do that, that they'd have to meet, their truck would have to meet certain specifications, and there's a permit that the county has for them to operate like that. But as far as I know.
That's what they would have to do, is come to the county.
We have a permit and specifications for any company that would want to do that. That, that's fine. And, you know, and some of these subdivisions that might be out away from here, there's nothing to say that they couldn't get Waste Management to put them a roll-off box, and then they have it picked up every week, and they throw their trash there to keep them having to use the solid waste centers, but they'd have to pay for that service.
Sure.
Okay. Going back to the hours, I mean, that sounds like something we would have to do, and Mr. Hood was talking about, was that seven to six?
I mean, I, I just do a number, I mean, a time out there. I mean, you need to have them open ten to twelve hours a day, I would think.
Yeah, in order for people to go into work before or after people into that, Saturday open, yeah.
They're open seven days a week.
Closed it or not?
They're closed at night, I think, or in the evening time. I think, I think if you do that, that's probably going to eliminate, you know, truckloads or trailerloads of trash, you know, at dusky dark or after dark coming in and dumping. I mean, that's my suggestion. I don't know, I mean, that's the only solution I can come up with. But I think that convenience factor of having it open on Monday or Sundays, I think, I think at this point now, if you try to take that away, you're going to have a lot of disgruntled citizens.
Deadfield was closed Sunday. It was full.
And they do close sometimes, not a lot of times, but it's just when they get full. And they, and, you know, we still need to let them have that option. I mean, obviously you don't want them to still take trash if you're full. You can't take.
There's nowhere for it.
I don't want any of those people having to pick up trash on Monday and have to load it out by noon. That's crazy. You said, you know, I've seen it where people just throw it on the ground. That's crazy.
That's been more of a problem since we've had truck issues. And I think once we get the truck thing worked out, and hopefully that's soon, and we have at least two on the road all the time, that there'll be fewer of those Monday mornings where they have to lock them down.
We have our RFP ready to go when the budget's approved for that new truck, to call or wait now.
Can I make a suggestion on these summer orders about this?
Yes, sir.
My wife works before late, and I just hope you're dead listening, because I'm Bill Beck, never say her that she just go down there and lock it, this trash. I mean, like Chad said, it'd probably help you lock them down, but. As far as people sitting at these dumpsters, they got twenty-four hours. She mows six hours, she don't sit there, she works. We have to go down and clean all this up every evening, that she ain't there, and it's mess. And people's putting stuff in there they shouldn't be putting in there. I mean, you got a good suggestion there about locking them down tonight.
While you're up there, may I ask you something, though, that when we're talking about opening them up every morning, seven days a week, and closing them every evening, how would that affect someone like your wife having to go there too? And those twenty-four hours would have to be split on those seven days at two different time periods in the day, every day.
I know, but I don't know how that would work now.
I might have to have.
I mean, y'all had it under control when you locked them all the time.
To be able to do that.
But now, you know, it's out of control. But my body wants them locked, and I can see why it's convenient, you know? But I don't know what the danger is, but I know nighttime when it all gets in there. So I go there and help them on that month of there.
Yeah, and I mean, that shouldn't have to happen. You know what I'm saying?
As far as working wise, most of them has to work. I mean, there's six hours mowing weeding down there, twenty-four hours. And they're making all minimum wage, no benefits, no that, but.
But one thing, you could have a closing time that that attendant would be there, and open it whenever the driver gets there that morning, except that would be a variable time. You know, it may be. Yeah, it may be eight o'clock at one site, but it may be eleven-thirty at another site. But that should be pretty routine, you know, but.
But I don't know what the danger is.
Do drivers go to every site every morning?
Not every site. Nicholsville, Ox and Gap, Dungannon, Fort Blackmore Vista, every day. Some of the outer sites like Fairview and Fifty-Eight, they go maybe once a week. But we don't usually have those problems there that we're seeing at these other sites too.
You say, Dungannon, you truck come to Dungannon every day, or I mean, about every day? Yes, sir. I wouldn't think it would be that much garbage come out of Dungannon.
They are.
There's probably people using that from, you know, Donny Creek and Upsinking and Hanging Rock, and everything comes into that one place.
They don't think that means people, they lock them down there.
I'll, I'll get the routes together and email you all what, what trucks are going around. Now, that may not have happened this week, because we've been down to one truck, and just logistically, we've not been able to do what we're normally there. But that's why you've seen those problems you've had too.
So if we did something on that, the hours, like what we're talking about, is that going to help work with the Sunday situ, or Monday morning situation still?
I think it's a good idea. The only thing that I can think of right now is the effect it's going to have on our workers, and their, their hours, and the two trips.
Well, the other, the other problem would be, if these folks learn on Sunday, they could come and run in there on Sunday and dump their trash too. Well, they could during the open day during any other time too, but they could very well do that on Sunday as well.
Does most of the people working at the sites build, or they live close or live far away?
Most of them live pretty close, because a few that haven't. They'll, they'll see it down there, and they just.
He's one of the most, really, as far as his travel time.
Yeah, most of the others live pretty close.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, because I've got a problem. I've thought about it since last month, and that's.
Well, I think if it is, if we save enough money from whatever we're getting out of Tennessee and Hilton's Highway coming down, and probably from Wise County, Russell County, coming through Dungannon, Nickelville area, and we're having to visit those sites every day for the amount of trash we're getting, it would pay to, to, to pay those people a little bit more, to spend a little bit more time there, and in order to keep some of that stuff down, or trash that they shouldn't be putting in dumpsters, and kind of control it that way.
They can't work over twenty-nine hours.
Oh, is that right?
They work over twenty-nine hours. We get into other labor laws, and they become full-time, and they're eligible for benefits.
Well, it's like Dave said, though, them people's going to figure out that time when there's nobody there, and they're going to come in there and dump their.
Well, it's like Dave said, though, them people's gonna figure out that time when there's nobody there, and they're gonna come in there and dump that trash. It won't take them no time to figure it out either.
Well, back when we did the Sunday thing open, it was a, it was a trial area, it was temporary, see if it would work, it hasn't worked. And so I think we go back to closing at seven o'clock Monday evening, seven o'clock Monday morning would be the place to start. Because if you can't get your trash off from Monday morning seven, to Saturday seven, or something wrong, you got, you got to have that Sunday, and I don't make Sunday. But anyway, that was temporary, when we put that in place, you remember, it was trial, it was trial area, see if it would work, and it hasn't worked, so... And we gave Bill that option, I think, that to do that, he could decide himself whether to close them or not, because he will see how it would work, and it's not worked, I don't think. Like I said, I went down there Monday morning, and, well, I said Sunday morning, just to see, didn't take any trash, just to see before church, and then went back Monday morning, I couldn't believe what was there. So it happened on Saturday night, Sunday sometime, or whatever, they got brought in there.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, I think a lot of people take their trash off on Sundays, other afternoons.
Oh, they do, and I, it's apparently do, because that Fort Blackmore, I've seen it, it'll be over the top on Sunday evening, but it, on Saturdays, not like that, so it's happening. And whatever inconvenience that is, where people have to, have to take their trash on Sun, off on Sunday, I don't, I don't know, I'm pretty busy if I manage to take mine off before that, or after that, and while they go pick Sunday, I don't know.
Over in Yuma, when the gates close, they drive by and throw it across the fence. Been several occasions that, to be able...
Yeah, we dig into those and try to find a name on it, but our Labor Control Officer goes there.
I'm gonna tell you something else, I drive by the Wise County site there next to County eighteen, and they got a site there, and I mean, they locked the gates up, it's a horrible looking site. They've been, the fence has been locked down for three or four years, they ain't put the fence back there, I don't know, it's just, you all do a good job on these, they look great. But, you know, we're blessed to have what we've got, but if people abuse it, you know, we gotta take action, do something, whether it's what Chad says, what I said, or whatever we need to do. We've got to do something different than what we're doing.
I guess a lot of the problem is, it's just not household waste going in, it takes a lot of, like you said, brush and stuff going in. You take a little bit of brush and fill up two or three dumpsters, and that would hold a whole lot of trash. Really, they don't need to be, most people in this county has a place to get rid of the brush, without taking it, putting it into, or if they're gonna take brush, or stuff like that, but how you enforce it? It has to go to the landfill or something like that, but I, it's enforceable.
Without having somebody that I would talk to. The Wise County, I think they have the, the big trailers, semi-trailers parked at the site. And they just throw it in, and that, that would be something that would have to be done through attrition, and it would affect jobs that the county has, and things like that. But the hauler that we haul, they may set it, we may be able to fix sites where they set one of those trailers at that site, and that truck just comes and gets it, and puts a new trailer in there.
Tell me maybe some of the heavier sites, or every site?
Maybe, it would take a lot of money to develop the sites, to sit close though. Be a different animal than what we have.
Because aren't those kind of what we say is in the ground? Where you're kind of labeled with the top of that term?
And you don't recycle anything, that I know of, we're required to recycle twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we have a state mandate.
So I don't, I don't know, but the thing about it, if we like had a Walmart that recycled all their cardboard, we wouldn't have to recycle any of our solid waste and still meet that twenty-five percent. So, the businesses make up a lot of that, we do, we do pretty good with, you know, the amount of cardboard.
What we do with recycling, I think, I think, I think a lot of people recycle here in the county, I think that's a good thing.
All right, let me ask one more thing, the, the, the sites that are close to the state line, what if we did what Chad said, and closed those, and maybe keep attendance there more regularly than other places where we know there's a problem? That deal Dunghan is a one-time deal, that's gonna happen, but those, those sites close to the state line, or close to the county line, that they maybe couldn't close those, the, you know, pick and choose which one you're gonna close, they'd be able to sign that, but where the most, the biggest problem is, which in there, Hiltons, or wherever, and just deal with those, that where you know there's a problem, expect Tennessee trash. So they're not gonna drive to Dunghan or Fort Blackmore, I don't think, Tennessee to throw the trash away, you know, at the ill-ate time, but anyway, it's just a thought too, be, try what Chad said, at those sites, that where we know there's a problem, especially close to Tennessee. How hard would that be to do, Bill, with the, those three or four sites?
I'd have to look at the hours and our manpower, or where we've not hired back the attrition on employees. You know, it, you may, may not have the employees to do that. I, I think, looking at the twenty-four, or the closing at night, seven days a week, is something that is doable. It will affect the, the employees, but we may be able to work something out where we just have one of them, and provide them a vehicle to drive around and close those sites at night.
I think before we do anything, I can, just if you want to, go ahead, over the next couple of weeks, just kind of go ahead and look at that, and see how that will affect everybody, and see if you can work out something with their schedule, like you're saying, maybe, you know, a vehicle to open and close, all this kind of stuff. I mean, I, I would support that.
Once you come back, Bill, in July, with a recommendation, that's what you think, where you deal with this, you manage it, you do well, and your recommendation, how, how to take care of this, and then let the board decide.
We may be able to rotate like all, but not be on call, like take it week about or something to do those.
Here's what I was, here's where I was headed, Danny, along the lines of what you're saying, is Chad's proposal, you know, that's proposal number one, and Chad, you can give me some hours if you want to, just off the top of your head, you're saying, you know, eight to seven, or seven to seven, or whatever.
I just know it needs to be open ten to twelve hours a day.
And then, and then in Danny's proposal, which would be, I guess the first proposal he discussed was close them on Saturday evening, and not open them until Monday morning, everywhere. And then you kind of came up with sort of a hybrid proposal, where you do it in the worst places. Now, there's three possibilities, and if we consider those three options, and we get some input from Bill between now and, you know, July, on whether or not he thinks his employees can get there and close them, and open them every morning and every night, or how he thinks it would affect, then let's come back and, and really just have two or three proposals, possible things, with all the information we can gather, and let's just vote on it and decide what we're gonna do. Does that boil it down, Ene?